I'd like to call the Menor City Council Regular Meeting, October 4, 2022, to order. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling. That's not right.
You got the wrong one.
I do. Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kirschner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Council, you're in receipt of the September 20, 2022, regular meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Here. Yes.
Hello.
Yeah, it's one of those.
Mr. Dowling.
Hello.
Yes. Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 22-0-083.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert.
Thank you. This ordinance is requesting revision to appropriations with regard to several activities, one at the parks, moving some monies for the construction of the pavilions, and also for the police department for Operation Stonegarden and a police retention bonus. Thank you.
Council? Oh, Mr. Krieger.
Need clarification on the thing for the Springbrook Fund. Was trying to get clarification on that from the administration earlier today or yesterday, anyhow. This was a bid project, correct?
It is going to be a bid project.
You haven't bid it out yet?
Correct.
Because I was informed that the 20,000s to make because the pricing went up on materials. And we normally do not allow that. I mean, if the contractor has already got the job, then he has to be responsible for the increase in costs, not the city. And I just want to-
That would normally be true, but in this case, we are yet to go out to bid.
Okay. So where the 20,000 increase come? How do we know that it's 20,000? Would one of the bidders tell us that this was going to be $20,000 more?
This was an initial thought of what it would be. We'd been getting quotes, and then when the low quote came in, in excess of 50,000, then we realized we were going to have to go to bid. But that we would, because the legislation had already been put together, we are going to go ahead and move into 20,000 and possibly may have to adjust again after we get the bid prices.
Wow. I'm a little confused on that. We wouldn't adjust again after, if we get a bid, it's a successful bidder, and he, the cost of materials or whatever go up, that would be his responsibility, not ours, correct?
Correct. Yeah, there's no scenario where we're allowing a contractor to pass on increased costs.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make clear on that.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-083 is passed. Ordinance number 22-0-84.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in the statewide municipal bridge inspection program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Schweiger to comment on this bridge inspection effort.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. There are 43 bridges overall throughout the city of Menor. Eight that the city maintains and inspects, 11 the county maintains, and 24 the state of Ohio maintains. City is required to inspect all city-maintained bridges annually and report the results of the inspections to the Ohio Department of Transportation. The eight bridges that fall into the city-maintained and inspected category are White Oak Drive, Beaver Creek Drive, Norton Parkway, the two bridges over the railroad tracks on the Heisey Road overpass, culverts under Hayes Boulevard, Culver Boulevard and Stony Brook Lane. The culverts under Hayes, Culver and Stony Brook are considered bridges as their spans are greater than 10 feet. For the past nine years, the Ohio Department of Transportation has performed inspections of the city bridges under the Bridge Inspection Program agreed to by the city. Program has been and will continue to be fully funded by the Ohio Department of Transportation. The annual inspection services have been performed by qualified consulting firms hired by ODOT. ODOT is currently seeking a renewal of this program and is requesting new legislation to renew the agreement for inspections to be done in 2023. It's recommended that this legislation be approved. Thank you.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-84 is passed. We have a resolution number 22-R-114.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Chillicothe Road Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert.
Thank you. Items 114 through 117 are all regarding Ohio Public Works, Ohio Public Works Commission applications, and I'll ask Mr. Schweiger to comment on the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. The city of Menor has applied for and has been tentatively approved to receive approximately $942,000 in grant funding and $400,000 in loan funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission. The District 7 Ohio Public Works Committee tentatively approved the pre-application for the Chillicothe Road Resurfacing Project in this year's Round 37 funding. City's been asked to provide a final funding application for the project. Project is expected to cost approximately $1.25 million and will be partially funded with a $475,000 grant and $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission. And the project will consist of resurfacing Chillicothe Road from Menor Avenue to State Route 84. As part of the application process, it is necessary for the city manager to be authorized by city council to submit the final application and execute the contracts when they are available in July of next year. This legislation is being presented to council to meet the October 14th application deadline. Thank you.
Council?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Mr. Blake. Dave, I'd like to thank you and everybody in the administration for getting this done for next year, because it was a disappointment that it didn't make it through the OPWC grant process last year. But I appreciate that you guys hung in there, made it stronger this year, and Chillicothe will be getting repaved next year, because it's, it needs it, and it's perfect timing. So, thank you, and thank you to everybody that got this done.
Mr. President?
Mr. President. Is there any possibility of, now that we've got a grant writer in the room, that we could get some bike lanes included in this project, 284? Extend what we already have? And I think you got about 300 feet that runs short of Hopkins, and then, I don't know, how far is it from there? About another half a mile to?
Schweickert, you want to comment on that?
We would be able to include it in this, this project funding. Our options would be to pursue other funding sources and either follow that up with a widening in the future.
Okay.
Our option on there. We couldn't, we couldn't change the scope at this point.
Just wanted to change, see if that was something we could do now or in the future, so, could plant that seed. Thank you. Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Resolution number 22-R-114 is approved. Resolution number 20-R-115.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Garfield-Jackson Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert.
I'll ask Mr. Schweiger again to comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. Once again, the District 7 Public Works Committee tentatively approved the pre-application for Garfield-Jackson Resurfacing Project. City's been asked to provide a final funding application for this project as well. Project is expected to cost $1,030,000, be partially funded with approximately $350,000 grant and $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission. Project will resurface Garfield Road from State Route 84 to the South Corp line and Jackson Street from Heisey Road to the East Corp line. Approval of this legislation is requested.
I have one comment. I want to thank Matt and Dave and Chief for looking into Garfield Road for me. I guess the semis are, the Silla Law Firm, clinic, the nursing home across 90, the trucks are all coming down Garfield pretty fast and coming up. I want to thank you guys for looking into that for me and staking it out a little bit. And I don't really know, aren't those truckers supposed to be using Center Street and coming in the South Side maybe at that nursing home, too? Wasn't there, we put languages?
I don't think there was a restriction when we looked into it last time.
All right. Thank you for looking into that, though.
Mr. President, I'm going to just, I presume the bike lanes would be included in this?
Thankfully, they will. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-115 is approved. Resolution number 22-R-116.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Edgehill Road Culvert Replacement and Lakeshore Boulevard Storm Sewer Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert.
Thank you. We'll now segue from road improvements to storm sewer improvements, and Dave?
Mr. Schweickert, Ohio Public Works Committee has also asked for the city to apply a final application for the Edgehill Road Culvert Replacement Project and the Lakeshore Boulevard Storm Sewer Improvement Project. This is a combined project. The city's been asked to provide a final funding application for it. Project is expected to cost approximately $314,700 and will receive a $50,000 grant and a $50,000 loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission. Project will consist of removing and replacing approximately 90 feet of a culvert between 8812 and 8819 Edgehill Road. Second portion of the project will replace approximately 6740 feet of 6-inch, 8-inch and 12-inch storm sewer and be replaced with 12-inch storm sewer along Lakeshore Boulevard between Green Oak Avenue and Dearborn Avenue. As part of the application process, it's requirement that the council authorize the city manager to apply for the final application and execute the contracts. Thank you.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Resolution number 22-R-116 is approved. Ordinance number 22-R-117.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Chillicothe-Ferlon Storm Sewer Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert.
Once more, I'll ask Dave to comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. The project is expected to cost approximately $335,000 and will be partially funded with a $117,500 grant and $50,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission. Project will consist of removing, replacing undersized 24-inch storm sewer under Fairlon Drive along Chillicothe Road with a new 36-inch storm sewer, and that's about 500 feet of storm sewer replacement. As part of the application process, it's necessary for city manager to be authorized to file the application and execute the contracts.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-R-117 is approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, ordinance number 22-0-072, 072.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended, Section 919.03, to require the issuance of permits for the removal of street tree species defined pursuant to law as undesirable.
Mr. Schweickert. You have anything?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Freeman, you have anything?
I do, but I think you have persons before.
You want people to speak first?
Sure.
That's fine. Mark Badzik. Mark, come on up and tell us your name and address, please, for the clerk. Thank you. You've got four minutes, too. Thank you.
Sure, I'll be brief.
Appreciate it.
My name is Mark. I've lived at 6605 North Palmerston since 2010. I would like to ask the council if you'd please reconsider passing this ordinance for several reasons, and I'll be brief. The first one, obviously, is that trees convert carbon dioxide into oxygen, life-giving. This may seem small, one street, but I believe that we have to act locally in order to make a difference. Trees also increase our property values, $1,000 to $10,000. They also help our energy costs by shade in the summer and also windbreak in the winter. So I think that we really need to be more responsible, become part of the solution, not part of the problem. It's also unclear, I've spoken to three residents out there on my street that aren't aware that they're paying for the whole thing. So I'd like everyone out there to realize that you're footing the bill.
Yes, we know.
Okay, good. The last point I want to make is probably a little bit of a question, and that would be, on the outside chance that someone steps on a 1-inch seed pod and falls down on the sidewalk, who's liable for that? Is that the city, or is that the owner? Or nobody? Do they just call their own insurance company? So I think that's a factor, and I'd like to know the answer to that. And with that, I rest.
Mr. Zeeman, you want to give an answer on that?
I can't provide any, any comment that would constitute legal counsel to private individuals relative to their potential liability as a homeowner. I'm just not permitted to do that. With respect to any city liability, I really can't publicly comment on that either.
That's a big argument. A lot of these people think they're going to be sued.
Again, that's a discussion that they should have, either with their insurance carrier and/or legal counsel. Again, I really cannot comment on any, any private liability that may exist. That's way outside of the parameters of my role as law director.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sharon D'Amico. Is Sharon here?
Yes, I'm coming.
Sharon, please give us your name and address for the, for the clerk, please.
My name is Sharon D'Amico. I live at 6651 North Palmerston.
Hi, Sharon.
I was just given this list that we've walked around. It's 1, 2, and those many signatures that want those trees down. And I just want to remind everyone that this ordinance is not about the value of every tree everywhere. It's only about the removal of undesirable trees. We're asking for the removal of one undesirable tree species, the sweet gum tree, that drop each and every day hundreds of these prickly balls, two seasons of the year, and thousands for the other two seasons, that cause a danger and also with a root system that is lifting sidewalks, causing a danger to anybody walking in our development. We have listened to arguments against the passing of this ordinance by those who don't live in our development and don't understand the daily cleanup of these large prickly balls needed for our safety and the need to dodge the uplifting sidewalks. Every homeowner in our development has many, many trees on their property. We love trees. This is one reason we bought our homes there. We are all saddened that these sweet gum trees need to be removed. Everyone makes mistakes. Everyone, even cities. Planting these trees in our tree lawn was a mistake that can't be rectified with the passing of this ordinance. Are we a city that cares more about saving a tree rather than the safety of its residents? I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Anyone on council?
We have more people.
We have more people? I didn't see that. John Gruden?
John, please give the clerk your name and address. Thank you. John Gruden, 6609 North Palmerston.
Thank you.
I've been to two previous meetings on this, and there's been a lot of discussion about, well, we want to have this looking beautiful, consistent, yet if you go down our areas, those three streets we're talking about, you have about nine or 10 lots that have something other than these trees on them, and you've got like six lots that don't have any trees on it. Yet we want consistency. Well, how do these people do this? And yet we're fighting, it takes something down, it's a danger, as she just talked about, we talked about at the other meetings, they are dangerous. And they get on the sidewalk, and it's, it's 12 months out of the year, and you can't go out there in the winter and clean them with the snow. But the snow blower blow them somewhere, probably in the street, and there's nothing you can do about it because they're covered by snow. And especially walking, if people are walking in the snow, they can't see those balls under their feet, and it's a real danger. But my, my main point was, how do these other people get away with all these trees other than the, than the sweet gum tree in their, in their front yard? Or none at all? And, and there's quite a few of them. I don't know if council's aware of that or not, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Pat Gruden, please come up and give your name and address for the clerk. You have four minutes, Pat.
Pat Gruden, 6609 North Palmerston, and I'm John's wife. And I hear enough about these every time he works in the yard, so I know they're a problem. And then also, I walk the dog, and I have to watch that I step right. So I know something has to be done, but this legislation has not been thought out. Who is going to be in charge of organizing how this is going to be done? Is there a committee? Is somebody going to be appointed? I mean, the last time, somebody said something about, well, we'll do maybe 15 a year, or we'll do a lottery or something, but nowhere does it, do we say, how is it going to be done?
Pat, we're going to discuss the ordinance when everybody's done speaking.
Okay. And then also, the cost, there was rumors around the street that the city was going to pay for the whole thing. Obviously, that's not true, and I have heard estimates anywhere from $350 for taking out, grinding, planting a tree, to over $1,500. So I think people have to realize before they take, consider taking a tree down, how much it's going to cost them out of their pocket. And since, and since the city's not going to do it, okay, and somebody mentioned on another street, the whole street had to agree on it. Is this something the street has to agree on? No? Okay. And, all right. And, well, anyway, I'm saying this, there's a project here, and we have to look all the things that have to be done before we start it and see that everything's done right. We want to keep our street beautiful, but we just don't want to cut trees down here and there. So that's got to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Cindy? I couldn't read your name. I'm sorry. Give your name and number, address to Julie, please.
My name is Cindy Fenner, 8883 Hendricks Road.
Hello.
So I'm a resident of Menor, and also I'm representing the Mentor Tree Commission. And the Mentor Tree Commission remains opposed to the passage of this legislation that would remove healthy, mature, live trees. The value of these trees cannot be replaced by planting a much younger tree. It's going to have a very negative impact on our city, which has, for 36 years, been a Tree City USA. It's going to open a can of worms there. We're talking about Palmerston, the trees there. According to our city arborist, there are 286 sweet gum street trees in the city of Menor. So we encourage you to think about that as you consider passing or not passing, opposing the legislation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. That's all we have on the, on the floor. So you understand, you guys spoke already, you can't come back up. And Mr. Freeman, do you have anything?
Yeah, so to address some of the, so in terms of to explain how the ordinance would work, you would submit an application, so it would be similar to if you were moving a tree on your property, but in this instance, you would need permission from the administration, from the city. You would submit an application. It would be whoever, and what we're going to contemplate, and we'll see if it passes, is a limitation on the number of trees that can be removed in a given year in order to address this sort of slippery slope argument that keeps being brought up. Again, so you would, it's correct, the resident would have to pay for the removal of the tree, for the removal of the stump, and the replacement of the, of the tree. One of the things that has been put forth by the Tree Commission is, you know, that there are other communities who do this very thing, it's been pointed out, in order to have some mitigating effect. I'm fine with the ordinance as it, as it exists, but in order to answer the question, you have to submit an application. If you're one of the first who apply, depending on if there is a limitation, we'll see if council supports that, you then have to pay for its removal, the stump's removal, and putting in a new tree. So what the city law director, which I think everybody in city council has received was there would be a limitation of the number of permits that would be issued. I'm going to propose, because I will move to amend in order to address, though I know it's not to the satisfaction of those who seem not to want to give any flexibility to the residents. But again, I think it does at least address the large demand that, the demand that does exist without the potential of theoretically 200 and some trees being removed, which I think is unlikely to begin, to begin with. I think what the precedent it is setting is that we are responsive to, to the residents and their concerns, and that though the opinions and points of view of arborists matter, it's not the only opinion that matters, and I think that of residents has to be taken in consideration. I think this is a narrow, focused ordinance, and will be further narrowed if... Which I'm going to do is to move to make the amendment, and so... Which is... So that... I mean, that's going to... That's my position, but in order to answer the questions that's been put forth. So I don't know if anybody else has any other comments. I'm sure they do, but before I make that motion to amend, I thought I'll pause and see if anybody has any other comment.
Mr. Freeman, to make clear, your motion to amend was what again? What was your amendment?
So the amendment is, which was signed by the... I mean, put forward by the law director, is that there would be no more than 15 total permits issued in any calendar year, and that in accordance with administration guidelines, including species, size, and location appropriateness of the location of the new tree, would also be taken into consideration.
Mr. Zeeman, are those three or four different amendments, or can he amend those all in the same?
The motion can incorporate as much verbiage as the council desires. Now, there might be multiple motions to amend, and each of those obviously would be handled separately.
Counsel, anybody else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
So this 15 permits is extended to all residents who have American sweet gum trees in their yards?
Correct.
Is that it? Not just to...
Citywide.
These people?
Correct.
Who have been here three times now?
Correct.
So how would we let everybody else who has an American sweet gum tree know that they are eligible for this? Because there may be other people and...
Well, I don't know if anybody doesn't know they're eligible for this after being on TV and newspaper. As of anything you want to afford yourself of the city, you have to probably find out about the program and the ordinances, but yes, it would apply and has to apply to give everyone the opportunity. And again, if you have 15 this year, you have the opportunity for 15 next year for another 15. So the purpose is to give these folks some relief, understanding that there is some concern on council and in the community, that this is going to open up. And so in an attempt to get something passed... To get an ordinance passed that recognizes those concerns while giving the residents the opportunity to remove these trees, I'm putting forth this amendment.
Mr. President?
Counsel, Mr. Kirchner. Cindy mentioned that there was 280 trees in the city, the sweet gum tree. Do we know what the number is for the total number of tree lawn trees in the city? By any chance, could they answer that?
About 24,000?
24,000. Okay. Thank you.
And I'd just like to throw in there, Mr. Schweitzer mentioned last meeting that I think we put in 150 trees this year so far? Around that number?
We have about 150 planned for the fall.
Okay. And this year, how many you think?
We did closer to 200 in the spring.
200 in the spring? Okay. And I just want to make that known, we do love trees. Anybody else?
All right, so I move to amend the ordinance as I stated. To limit it to no more than 15 permits in a calendar year with the additional requirements of referring to the master street planning list as approved by the director in accordance with administrative guidelines, including size, species, and location and appropriateness of the replacement tree.
Mr. Freeman, may I? Obviously, the clerk's going to want us. Very, very specific language. If the motion... Yeah, so if the motion is already...
To adopt this as incorporated with the addition of 15 trees.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
And I need to call the roll. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
We're voting on this? This is an actual...
Amendment.
Amendment.
The amendment. Oh, yes, unamended.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Move to suspend as amended.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Ordinance number 22-O-072 is approved. Managers report. Mr. Schweitzer, do you have anything?
Just a few things, sir. Just wanted to remind residents with the onset of fall that the amount of yard waste that could be set out increases on October 24th. It goes from 12 units of yard waste to 25, and that will continue through the completion of the program, which is the second full week of December.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schweitzer. What was the date, starting date again?
October 24th.
I appreciate it.
The week of. Yeah. Have a handful of projects that have limited traffic. I just wanted to update council on when those will conclude. The Hendricks Road Bridge should wrap up by the end of November. There's a Mentor Avenue culvert project over near the mall that'll complete at the end of this month, and the Market Street resurfacing should be completed by mid-November. We also have a few new businesses which I would like to mention. Dave's Precision Automotive on Station Street, Jiffy Lube on Diamond Center Drive, and Planet of the Vapes on Mentor Avenue. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Clerk's correspondence.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Commission and committee reports. Counsel, you're in receipt of the Tree Commission, August 17, 2022 minutes. Old business, we... Old business? Anybody?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marne?
I went back and added up. We have over $3 million in roads and sewers in this agenda.
Right.
So you know.
Fantastic.
I'm looking for more bike lanes.
More bike lanes.
We have... That was old business. New business? Any new business?
Actually, I...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Krieger.
Well, I just wanted to bring up, over on Veterans Park, I know it's city property, but it's maintained by the Lake Metro Parks. And I'll pass this down. A number of people have seen it, but since over the last six years, a lot of the pond has been deteriorated with a lot of algae and growth in it, so it's almost... We continue to let it go like this, it could become a marsh instead of a pond, which we, you know, have stock fishing and all that in there. I just wanted to let council know, and whatever we can do to talk with Lake Metro Parks to start cleaning up the area, I think it should be done. I mean, the residents all around the pond, you know, are familiar with that. It'd be a shame, especially since it's called Veterans Park, to have something like that go away.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger.
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Kirchner, go ahead.
Maybe Mr. Schweitzer could answer. What would be the possibility of getting this issue to the Metro Parks? Would the... Do we have the... Council want to send a letter? Do we want to have the council leadership send a letter or...
I think we should.
Yeah, we could do that. I got a call from the Metro Parks, and we could have a meeting with you, too, if you'd like to go. You know, we could meet them there and talk to them and see what's really going on. I don't quite understand. I've never seen it like that, and I'm not a biologist, but, you know, something's happening there, and the... Obviously, you can see the resident signs are up, and they're concerned about the pond. That pond was perfectly clear and clean and deep, and fish were thriving, and now there seems to be a real problem, so we'll set up a meeting with them and find out what's going on, what they're doing to fix that.
Certainly like to be involved in that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner, go ahead.
I would propose a motion to approve the 2023 council meeting schedule with the first meeting in July to be held on Wednesday, July 5th, due to the July 4th holiday, and to cancel the July 18th and August 1st meetings for summer break and the December 19th meeting for the holiday break.
And I would like to second exactly what Mr. Kirchner said.
Again, you got to repeat it. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
That is approved. Persons before council? We have none. Counsel, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, Mr. President?
Sorry, Scott.
Oh, you're okay. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, to consider compensation of public employee or officials. Need a second. Need a second.
We have a second?
Do we have a second?
Mr. Krieger.
Who seconded?
We have a second. Mr. Krieger.
Okay, executive session.
Oh, we have to call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.